Commissioner Decker.
Here.
Densberger.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Mayor Miggas.
Here.
While present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation. May I stand for the pledge?
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you for the beautiful day we've had today across this area in our city. We thank you we can assemble together tonight to conduct the city's business and also recognize some great activities and causes to support such as the duck race. And we thankful that we can participate in a small way in that too as a community. We ask that you would be with us as we deliberate, pray for our nation, the also the tremendous fires out in the west coast in California, the people there in such an awful time with the fires, loss of homes and life. We pray for their safety, for those that work, multiple thousands that work trying to contain these fires. We don't really identify with that here, but we do pray for their safety and their protection as they fight these things. We ask your blessing on our meeting tonight, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve the amendments, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the amendments of the special meeting for a working session and regular meeting both held on July 17, 2018 be approved as printed.
Second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Decker, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Miggas.
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Okey dokey. Communications, we have a proclamation, one that we look forward to every single year. Whereas one out of four women will be abused or assaulted in her lifetime, one out of thirteen seniors will be abused, neglected, or exploited in his or her lifetime. One out of three girls and one out of five boys will be abused before their 18th birthday. One out of three students will witness or experience bullying. And whereas the Center for Prevention from Abuse has served residents of East Peoria since 1976, providing safety and support to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and elder abuse. And whereas the center maintains a site in East Peoria which houses its family violence intervention program. And whereas the center has provided prevention education to East Peoria students of all ages since 1984, focusing on body safety, conflict resolution, anti-bullying, and building healthy relationships. And whereas the annual duck race is the major fundraiser for the Center for Prevention of Abuse and is celebrating its 30th anniversary on August 25, 2018. And now therefore, I, David W. Miggas, Mayor of the City of East Peoria, do hereby proclaim August 2018 the Duck as Duck Race Month in East Peoria, Illinois, and invite all residents to support the 30th annual duck race in order to maintain the needed services and programming of the Center for Prevention of Abuse. I present this to Carol Myrna, their president, who does a great job.
Look forward to it every single year.
As do.
Please say a few words.
I'm glad to. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us back. It's such a joy for us. We do hard work every day and to be able to celebrate something as happy as the duck race is always a pleasure for us. So on behalf of the Center for Prevention of Abuse and our leadership and all those who serve there, let me tell you just how much the City of East Peoria's partnership means to us. We are in our 43rd year of operation at the Center for Prevention of Abuse. And as we reflect back on our history, we know that it is the partnerships and the heartfelt relationships that we have with folks like the City of East Peoria that make all the difference in the world. It's those relationships that allow our mission and our vision to be successful. And I am all but certain that it would not be if we did not have you in arm-in-arm with us. Your strong commitment through these partnerships is very dear to us. And we say that every year, but we want you to know that it's deep and it's true and it always will be. We appreciate the good leadership that you have and so many folks that work with the City of East Peoria that come out to support not only the duck race, but some of the things that have to happen beforehand so that we can have a duck race, like our duck tagging. So East Side Center, the fire department, all those who are joined with us, we really are grateful. So we are preparing to hold our 30th annual duck race. It's a landmark year for us. We are the oldest duck race in the country. It's a proud banner that we carry. And we are working at no end to sell 30,000 ducks. You can ask a couple of people in the audience that I hit up right before we came up here tonight. So we are, again, very appreciative of you. And we hope we see you on August 25. Come out at noon for the festivities. 2 o'clock is the race. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you. It's really fun seeing all those ducks come down that hill.
Quite a sight to behold. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. But never forget what those duck represent, and that's serving the people of our community. And you do a great job, firsthand experience with seeing what you do. All right. Anybody in the audience want to speak to the council on? Yeah, good job. You deserve it. Anybody in the audience want to speak to the council on an agenda item, please come forward. Nobody coming forward. Seeing no one come forward. We have a consent agenda?
We do, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a consent agenda consisting of items numbered 1 through 4, as listed on the agenda for this meeting, to be considered by amicus vote.
Second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Call. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Miggas.
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you.
And so, Mr. Mayor, I move you that items numbered 1 through 4 listed on the consent agenda be hereby approved and adopted. The items numbered 2 through 4, having been read once by their title, having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Call. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Miggas.
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
I'll continue on then, Your Honor.
Please do.
I have Resolution Number 1819-046, be it resolved by the council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that Resolution Number 1819-046 heretofore attached, a resolution approving and authorizing the payment of an invoice from Midwest Engineering Associates, Inc., for engineering work related to plans and specifications for Festival of Light's electrical upgrade project in the amount of $12,522.20, be approved, and that this Resolution Number 1819-046 be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Call.
Thank you, Commissioner. Your Honor, this item and the, excuse me, the next item are of course related. Mr. McCarty came and we spoke about this, I don't know, about 10 days ago. Doug, would you care to give us a rundown on these two?
Yeah, basically, this is for the Winter Wonderland, the electricity services that are in there, have been there since originally, so early 90s, pushing 30 years old. Last couple of years we've had, those are exposed elements outside year-round. So had some issues we've had to kind of band-aid them last couple of years. I know Mr. Triggs and the mayor have been aware of those. We've gotten through it. This is going to, with the LED lights and the other efficiencies, this is going to be a huge, like a great payback project. We're going to eliminate 17 of the 28 electrical meters. And those, with Amarin, we get charged per month whether there's electricity on them or not. So we'll eliminate 17 of those. And then the biggest thing will be that we'll be able to put the entire park on a timer. So the lights only be on roughly eight hours a day versus the 24 hours for the six weeks that they've been on. So we'll cut the energy cost of the electricity plus save the life of the LEDs. So down the road, we'll save some money that way too. So like I said, it's kind of a couple of years overdue, but we found some efficiencies the last couple of years, had some really good years attendance-wise. So we feel that this is the time to kind of make that upgrade.
Make things safer, too.
And largely, these costs can be off, will be offset like all festival expenses by the operation of.
Commissioner, go right ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, I know you just said the word "safety." I had a chance, just in passing, saw Mr. Broschier's in the Public Works parking lot. We were talking about this. He's in the middle of this. But he emphasized to me the safety aspect of this too. I mean, it just, you may want to comment.
And we've had to have electrical contractors come and make sure the loads are safe and things, especially before the LEDs. This will be literally like a plug-and-play. Everything's going to be set to where there's not going to be any dangerous loads or anything that, whether if it's raining and somebody plugs something in, there's no, it'll trip, you know, GFI-protected type things, which it never had before. So this will definitely be much safer.
And you've had calls before, haven't you, when the lights went out and needed to get fixed and?
Yeah.
Well, we've had to get a waiver each year, so.
Yeah, no more waivers. It'll help some of that cost too. We don't want the labor side of it having to have someone else come in and check everything.
Sure.
Will be eliminated.
Good job, Doug. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Miggas.
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
And then this, Your Honor, is the related item, Resolution 1819-047, be it resolved by the council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that Resolution Number 1819-047 heretofore attached, a resolution authorizing a contract for Festival of Light's electrical upgrade project with AMP Electrical Services, Inc., in the amount of $134,000, be approved, and that this Resolution Number 1819-047 be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Call.
Thank you, Commissioner. This was sent out for bid. AMP was the only respondent. Laser and Overlander chose not to respond.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Miggas.
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor, I move you that Ordinance Number 4408 heretofore attached, and Ordinance amending Title III, Chapter III of the East Peoria City Code, to change the number of Class A liquor licenses authorized to be issued within the corporate limits of the city, be read at length by the clerk, and that said Ordinance Number 4408 be accepted on its first reading and be hereby adopted as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner. Morgan?
Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the City of East Peoria, Tazewa County, Illinois, that Section 1, Title III, Chapter III, Section 1.10 of the East Peoria City Code is hereby amended to read as follows. Additions are indicated by underlined, deletions by strikeout. 3-3-1.10 licenses, limitation upon number issued. So that the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city shall be protected, and minors shall be prevented from the purchase of alcoholic liquors, and temperance in the consumption of alcoholic liquor shall be fostered and promoted. A, no additional Class A licenses shall be issued under provisions of this chapter unless the number of such licenses enforced at the time shall be less than 16. Provided however, that upon the surrender and cancellation of an existing license, local liquor control commission may issue such license to a person who has purchased the business or premises of the prior licensee, provided further that in the event of annexation of any territory to the city, which territory there is, located in any business or property for which a valid county retail liquor license has been issued and enforced at the date of such annexation, local liquor control commission is empowered to authorize issuance of a new license strictly under the provisions of this code to the named person in the county retail liquor license issued for such business or property, notwithstanding the foregoing limitations upon the number of licenses to be issued. Section 2 of this ordinance is ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk. Said clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies hereof available for public inspection in the future in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section 3 of this ordinance, in addition to all other ordinances on the subject, shall be construed therewith, except in as to that part in direct conflict with any other ordinance ending in the event of such conflict. The provisions hereof shall govern. Section 4 of this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and 10-day period of publication in the manner provided by law.
Thank you, Morgan.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Miggas.
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Mayor, I move you that Ordinance Number 4407 heretofore attached, and Ordinance authorizing the submission of a referendum on the question of whether the City of East Peoria should adopt the managerial form of municipal government, be read at length by the clerk, and that said Ordinance Number 4407 be accepted on its first reading and be hereby adopted as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Morgan?
Ordinance Number 4407, an ordinance authorizing the submission of a referendum on the question of whether the City of East Peoria should adopt managerial form of municipal government. Whereas a portion of the community is interested in exploring an alternative form of municipal government, and the council of the City of East Peoria finds that citizens should have the opportunity to vote to adopt the managerial form of government. Whereas in order to encourage a full and complete public discussion on the merits of changing the form of government and form of municipal government to the managerial form, and to ascertain the will of the majority voting, it's best interest of the city to submit by way of a binding referendum the question of adopting the managerial form of municipal government to voters for their consideration at the next general election. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the City of East Peoria, Tazewa County, Illinois, that Section 1 is hereby authorized and directed that there shall be submitted to the citizens of the City of East Peoria as authorized by Section 5-1-1, I'm sorry, 5-1-5, in the Illinois Municipal Code 65ILCS5/5-1-5, by binding referendum at the next general election, the question of whether the City of East Peoria shall adopt the managerial form of municipal government. Section 2, the public referendum on the question of whether the City of East Peoria shall adopt the managerial form of government, municipal government shall be submitted to the citizens of the City of East Peoria at the general election to be held on the 6th day of November 2018 in the City of East Peoria. Section 3, the form of the question shall be clearly indicated on the ballot in the following form. Shall the City of East Peoria adopt the managerial form of municipal government? Yes, no. Section 4, the form of the ballot and method shall be, as authorized and set forth in the election code 10ILCS5/1-1 et c. Section 5, the city clerk shall certify the question together with a certified copy of this ordinance to the Tazewa County Clerk, Honorable for August 30, 2018. Section 6, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk. Said clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies hereof available for public inspection in the future in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section 7, this ordinance is in addition to all other ordinances on the subject, shall be construed therewith, except in as to our indirect conflict with any other ordinance, and in the event of such conflict, the provisions hereof shall govern. Section 8, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and 10-day period of publication in the manner provided by law.
Thank you, Morgan. This ordinance was researched and developed at the mayor's request. We've, it's been discussed for some months. I happen to support the mayor's thought. It's a simple question to be placed on the ballot, being, shall the City of East Peoria adopt the managerial form of municipal government? If this is adopted and it's the only referendum question adopted, it would be a direct transition from our current form of the commission form with four commissioners and a mayor to the manager form. The only outlier as far as the direct result would be a question as to whether there would be four aldermen or six aldermen. The feeling of the city attorney's office is that it would be four, but there is that possibility of it being six. It's my feeling, for one at least, that the City of East Peoria is a city of something more than 23,000 people. We're a fairly small town. But as I had a conversation earlier today with Mr. Becker, especially from the financial side, we are anything but a normal, small town of 23,000 people. We have, we've done a lot of development. We have a large sales tax base. We have TIF districts. We have business service districts. We have various departments. All of this is, it's become clear to some of us that it's time for East Peoria to become more professional, to hire a professional administrator to actually run the day-to-day operation of the city. We took a half-measure as we hired a new city administrator with the idea that commissioners would take a step back. That has proven less effective than we had hoped. So it, this would put the question, a very simple and direct question before the citizens. Do you want to keep the form that you have and have had for 100 years? Or is it time to step forward to a more professional mode of government? That in effect is the question, Your Honor.
Other comments, please.
Hi, obviously, if you watched the last council meeting, I will not be supporting this, somewhat take offense to the notion that we're not professional now. I believe we are, and we have been for 100 years. We have very intelligent people living throughout our community. And some of the most intelligent probably have never been elected yet and are still to come. So I tend to reject the notion that we can't run our community without hiring an outside source as a manager. Now, there are two topics on the agenda tonight. I'm going to speak about the second one in a few minutes after I read it. This one is strictly about this. I don't believe in the city manager form of government. I did state last council meeting that, when I say that, I don't believe the city manager form of government is necessary in the City of East Peoria. I did state last council meeting that if the people of East Peoria wished me to vote in favor of this, to place it on the ballot, then I would do so. Other than a few people in this room, I have heard from one other person outside of here who has said, yes, I want to see this city manager form of government on the ballot. So this is not an item from the people. This is an item from the council, and it's something I don't believe in. I believe that any initiative like this, a change in government initiative, should come from the people. And yes, we could, we could put it out there every election of whether or not we should change our form of government. But I do not believe there's been an outcry from the people for this. And I'll reserve my comments about the second item here in a minute.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments, please.
Just a question. I know we have, we've been given quite a bit of information over the months and recently as well. I guess a question I have for our attorney, Mr. Triggs, would be the question of wards. I think that may be a question that you might comment on as far as what's required there. And I know there's some, maybe some options perhaps, but your opinion and is what the law would be. If this managerial was accepted, whether it's four commissioners or six, I mean, we understand there's some question there, but what about the whole system of wards or districts?
We think it's rather clear that the officials will be elected at large and not from wards. There is a process whereby in the future, people could, by referendum, could initiate having these officials elected from wards, but that would not be the outcome if this question were approved during the referendum. They'd be elected at large.
I guess maybe Commissioner Densberger or the others could comment as well. But also, what would be different? We've read and we know how it could be different. Could you give an overview, Commissioner Densberger, of the differences that we would see in the day-to-day operations as far as what we would see on our agendas and so forth?
The, in the management form of government, the, there is a city manager hired who is in effect the CEO of the city. Department heads would report directly to that person, who as a trained administrator would be versed in accounting, purchasing, personnel management, pretty much the gamut of administration of municipal functions. The, the primary difference is that under the commission form, department heads report to each of us, whom, while we may have built some expertise over the years, do not bring that with us to the office. However, the city manager would report directly to the council as a whole, and the council would of course have ultimate oversight as to the manager's direction and function. The council would still do budgeting, would still do planning, and would of course, any city manager that wants to keep his job is going to listen very closely to and keep the pulse of the council in mind.
Thank you. Commissioner Call.
Yeah, my, we held that working session three weeks ago this evening. I took the position that I didn't feel it was the place of this council to bring this forward, any change in the form of government, whether it's this managerial or the next agenda item. And I'll share with those on this council, other than the few people that stood up at that podium and shared their personal thoughts, there were folks that I personally know that signed the petition that is directly related to the next agenda item, that made it clear to me that my position stating that I don't believe this council should be any part of this, they concurred with that. And they too believe that it should be driven by the people if the people so desire to see a change in the form of government. I personally have no issues making it informational. I certainly wish we would have held possibly a town hall meeting three, four months ago and brought this information out for people to consider. But I'm going to stand by my position. I don't believe this council should be bringing this forward. It should be driven by the people that want to see the change. So I won't support either one this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. I believe that it's time to look at it, and the people have the opportunity to make a choice. It's not my personal information, should I say, that we bring this forward. 1.9% of the municipal governments are now commission form of governments. The rest of the country has abandoned it, and there's some very obvious reasons. Although if the people elect to continue on, so be it. I think if they do, I want to say that you want to make sure you know who you're electing. You don't want to elect somebody who has an axe to grind with the city or somebody who's just a good guy because they're running a department. They're supervising personnel issues. They're supervising daily operations. They have the ultimate power to seize anything in that department. And we as commissioners have no say whatsoever except our say regarding what they do. So what that means is you can have five different personnel decisions on one particular instance. It means that you can have one person that wants to sue somebody, the rest of you don't, but that commissioner makes that decision, arbitration. So I think just the people need to see that, make a decision. If they want to stick with the commissioner form of government, very good. Just make sure you elect the right people because it's going to really be important coming up here. So with that in mind, I think we've all spoke. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
No.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
No.
Call.
No.
Mayor Miggas.
Aye.
There's two ayes and three noes, Your Honor. Question fails.
Very good.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a few items. My first one is what I referred to a minute ago. It's what a few of us referred to a minute ago.
It's, uh, what a few of us referred to a minute ago. Resolution number 1819-050. It's a bit of reading here, so I'll, uh, try to get through it quickly. Whereas, city has received a petition requesting a binding referendum on the question of whether or not the city of East Peoria should retain the commission form of government, and whereas the effort said petition demonstrates that a portion of the community is interested in exploring an alternative form of municipal government, and whereas, in order to encourage a full and complete public decision on the merits of retaining a commission form of municipal government, and to ascertain the will of the majority voting, it is in the best interest of the city to submit by way of binding referendum the question of retaining commission form of municipal government to the voters for their consideration in the next general election. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois. The section one, it is hereby authorized and directed that there shall be submitted to the citizens of the city of East Peoria as authorized by Article seven, Section 11 of the Constitution of Illinois, in Section four dash ten dash one, Illinois Municipal Code sixty-five ILCS five dash four dash ten dash one, by binding referendum at the next general election by the question of whether the city of East Peoria shall retain the commission form of municipal government. Section two, the public referendum on the question of whether the city of East Peoria should retain the commission form of municipal government shall be submitted to the citizens of the city of East Peoria in the general election to be held on the sixth day of November 2018 in the city of East Peoria. Section three, the form of the question shall be clearly indicated on the ballot in the following form. Shall the city of East Peoria retain the commission form of municipal government? Yes or no? Section four, the form of the ballot and method shall be as authorized and set forth in Election Code ten ILCS five dash one dash one. Section five, the city clerk shall certify the question together with a certified copy of this resolution to the Tazewell County Clerk on or before August 30th, 2018. Section six, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage and approval in a manner provided by law. Mr. Mayor, I move you, move you that Resolution number 1819-050 will be adopted as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Jeffers.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers. So one would ask, if I, if I didn't support the previous, um, item, why would I support this? Again, pointing back to what I brought up a few weeks ago, I would only, um, bring something up about this if the people wanted me to. This is not something that I would bring forward. I'm not saying there aren't issues that come up in, um, in government, uh, this council or any other council. What I'm saying is, um, whoever, whatever form of government you have, whoever you elect, that is what is important and is how well or in how well your government will run. So, it was, after the last council meeting, it was decided by some members of the community to start a petition. That petition, uh, seeking signatures to place on the ballot, not the managerial form of government, but instead to, um, to abolish the commission form of government. Speaking with Dennis quite a bit, the belief is if that were to happen, we would revert back to, I bless, I believe what's called an aldermatic form of government, which would be, I believe, six, four or six, um, commissioners, uh, elected at large and one mayor. Instead of how we currently, um, have our government, whereas I, for example, am commissioner over streets and garbage, um, there is, a commissioner would not have sole authority and responsibility over a department. And I understand that. I understand that there are, are concerns for that, you know? Somebody gets elected not having a knowledge over a certain department, uh, that could be difficult. I know a lot of places that have that form of government then, uh, produce committees that would make such decisions over those departments. So instead of one person having the authority, it would be by committee. Again, this is not something that I would have brought forward. However, when the people circulated petitions, they gathered around 220 signatures. The thought was that they needed 160 signatures. There was a little bit of confusion whether they needed 10% or 25% of the previous election's mayoral total. So they submitted petitions thinking that they had plenty, and actually, they still had plenty of time to get, uh, the rest of them. But they submitted the petitions, then afterwards found out that they actually needed, I believe, 25% of the previous election mayoral total. So they actually needed somewhere up around 450. To me, what I said last council meeting was, if I believe that the people want me to put something on the ballot, I will do so. And this demonstrates to me that the people do want this out there, at least a couple hundred people, and I believe they would have easily, um, received the 450 or so signatures that would have been necessary. If someone asked me, well, Dan, how are you going to, going to vote on it in November? I can't tell you that tonight. Um, I have done quite a bit of research on this, but I am not an expert. I guarantee I will be by then. I'm going to know, uh, exactly how I feel, uh, when it comes to that. And I urge everyone else, if this does pass tonight, to make yourself knowledgeable. This commission form of government has, has worked well for the city of East Peoria for a hundred years. We have some great development. I would, I would put our city up against any other community. Um, yes, there are challenges in the commission form of government, but, uh, there, there are pros and cons to, um, abolishing the commission form of government. Um, there, as some have brought up, there have been things that haven't been perfect and, and, uh, going to a different form of government would, would be different. So, it might take care of some of those problems. One con, I see, just to be totally honest, both are in the room tonight. Jeff Becker and Morgan Cadwallader, these are two employees, and as far as employees go, they are two of the best hires I've ever been part of, two of the best employees you will ever see. Both of them do their job exceptionally, and without them, the city, uh, would have a huge hole. If we do abolish the commission form of government, then those two positions would be elected rather than appointed. Now, uh, Morgan, I have no doubt that she, uh, she has proved her worth and would be elected. Jeff doesn't live in the city, so that's a concern. He would have to move to the city in order to be elected into that position. One would say, well, you have got to take personal, um, feelings out of this, and I understand that, but if, my thought process, that's something that I'm going to consider. Um, I care deeply about this community, and I don't care what government it is. I don't care what form of government we have. All I care about is the city continues to move forward. So, at the will of what I believe at least to be a couple hundred people, I am going to vote, uh, yes, to allow this to be on the ballot coming from us. Um, again, I'm not sure which way I'm going to vote come November.
Other comments, please.
I'll, I'll make some comments, be quite honest with you. I'm surprised this is on here. Um, going to shed some light on these numbers. Two thousand fifteen election cycle, that's what Commissioner Decker was referring to. In East Peoria, there's fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seven registered voters. In the mayoral election, 1,678 votes were cast. Signatures required for this specific question to be, uh, considered as a referendum on the November ballot requires 420 signatures, which is 25% of the 1,678. Two hundred and twenty-one people signed that petition, and I stated moments ago that some of those individuals I personally know, and those same individuals reached out and shared with me, they didn't feel it was this council's place to bring it forward. Whether it moved forward or not, it should be driven by them. I stand by that position today. I, once again, I'm, I'm kind of stunned that it's even being considered tonight, but I won't support it for the same reasons I stated five, six minutes ago.
You know, we've, uh, the last, actually, several years has been, uh, conversation on and off again about making a change, and we've, uh, heard that from, from some that have said that, and we've, we've actually investigated that. Part of me would say, uh, you know, maybe we should just put this on the ballot and so we can establish it and then move on and, and, and put this behind us, because we've had the sniping for the last couple of years, three years over it, and questioning integrity and how we buy things, and I, and I, it's easy to get defensive when we're in the middle of this and we're operating and, and I think trying to do a good job, but at the same time, I mean, none of us are here forever either, so it's, it's what the community chooses and endorses in the people they elect. I, I get that, and I, I respect that. I want to respect that. And I have stated before, I, I believe it doesn't matter which form of government that we have here locally, uh, it, it comes down to whoever is selected to fill these seats. Um, I, I guess, in some ways, to, if, if people feel strongly against the commission reform, then it would revert back to the, um, the aldermanic type government. We would have sort of a blend of getting it away from individual CEOs across the table here and would go more of a committee structure, and you would have a, a mayor that would be there to, um, break ties and votes versus a, a city manager who would be managing, the mayor would be there to try and develop a consensus. It would put more responsibility on the mayor, actually, I think could. Um, either way, you have the same city staff here as far as the fire chief, police chief, public works director, east side, et cetera. So in some ways, city staff would not change. There might be some tweaking of, uh, the way we conduct our, um, employees and the way we, our manpower and so forth, and that, that can happen even with the current form we have. So, um, a part of me says, you know, we should do that. I, I can see, I, I understand Commissioner, um, Call's position, but this should be strictly up to the citizens to initiate and not the council, especially as we head towards a spring election for, uh, the next round of, of the city council and the mayor. And so, um, you know, and that's where I, um, I understand that as well. I did vote against going for the managerial, managerial form, and, um, I, I guess I, I can, I can see this as perhaps a compromise to, to go this way and support this, but at the same time, I, I, uh, I, I feel like we're maybe pushing a square peg in a round hole a little bit. Uh, and I, it's not that I, but, um, I, um, the, it ultimately comes down to voters, and I, and I think personally, personally, I, I had some issues with the, um, the other form being suggested, but for this one, I feel more comfortable with it. It would still allow us as commissioners to be at large and, and still oversee and have input into our city and, uh, and be a, maybe a transitional change, may last another 50 years, who knows? But, um, I will, um, I will support this. It may not pass through us, but I will support the, uh, the idea that, um, if we're going to change, this is the way to go. We have more control over things going this direction than the other, which we've already defeated. And it might be the easiest to vote no on this, but I think I'll go ahead and just vote yes, because I think it's a worthy replacement if we got there. Uh, but it's a worthy replacement where I was not, um, I was not at all warm and fuzzy about the managerial, managerial form of government, so I will support it, and we'll see how the vote goes, and we'll move on.
Other discussion?
Your Honor, the, the question that, uh, this resolution would place on the ballot, should this, uh, should the city of East, East Peoria retain the commission form of municipal government? Simple question. The implementation and the answer is anything but, and it's certainly not clear. It's extremely ambiguous, actually. Uh, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Triggs at length this morning. Uh, we've talked about it two or three times. I, I've gone through the memo, so let me, uh, provide some information as to what would happen if, uh, this is adopted.
Please do.
Um, I know that 220-some people signed, uh, petitions. Uh, I've spoken with several of them, none of which were aware of the ramifications of this vote. So, let's talk about that. If this question succeeds and we abandon the commission form of government, we are to, uh, automatic, under the state municipal code, we are to automatically adopt the aldermanic form. There is a mayor. Uh, there would be perhaps six aldermen, because that's how many the, uh, aldermen there were at the time that the commission form was adopted a hundred years ago. So it would be six, presumably elected at large. However, under the state municipal code, there is no provision in the aldermanic form of government for only, for aldermen to only be elected at large. You can have them elected from wards, you can have them elected from wards and some at large, but there is no provision for them to be elected all at large. Substantial question, um, could end up in the courts very easily. To extend that line of thinking, if it is found that since there is no provision for everyone to be elected at large, you would then have to create wards. Under the current, um, configuration, there would be three wards with two aldermen from In the year 2020, at the next census, if there are wards created, based on our population, that would expand to seven wards, 14 aldermen elected from wards. All of this is basically unclear under, because there is no specific path in the state municipal Also, uh, as Commissioner Decker stated, uh, the city clerk position and the city treasurer position would become elected. We currently have two professionals that, performing those tasks, that perform them well, uh, provide organization and expertise to the city. If these positions are elected, you have one of two things, as Commissioner Decker suggested. For instance, uh, Morgan Cadwallader could run for, for, could run for city clerk. However, since these would then be political and elected positions, you may very well have people from the community run that are in no way qualified to be the city clerk, and certainly not the city treasurer, in which case, best case, you would be paying them to perform the job with our current clerk, Morgan Cadwallader, and Mr. Becker, reporting to them. Therefore, you're spending more money for less professionalism. I cannot support, while I respect the, the effort, this question and its result are far too ambiguous, and I believe an absolute step backward for the city of East Peoria. And, um, I know that, as I said, I know that several people that signed the petition, uh, they, they, most of them told me that they signed it because they are upset with our current form of government, but they had no idea about the ramifications, and once they were made aware of some of them, disavowed having made the signature and wished they hadn't done it. So with that, Your Honor, and for those reasons, I will adamantly oppose this.
Everybody said their piece? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
No.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
No.
Mayor Megas?
Aye.
We have three ayes and two noes, Your Honor.
Let the people decide.
My next, my item, Mayor, Resolution number 1819-040. Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that Resolution number 1819-040 heretofore attached, Resolution approving and authorizing the acceptance of a low bid for the DuPont Lane Approach project from Koenig Trucking and Excavating LLC in the amount of $6,365 be approved. This Resolution number 1819-040 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Call.
Thank you, Commissioner Call. Um, we have an issue in, on the end of DuPont Lane that is a, a safety issue as well as, um, with our trucks turning around, um, has caused damage, so I'll let Dennis, uh, explain in detail.
Uh, yes, at the end of, uh, DuPont Lane, we have, uh, for safety reasons, our garbage trucks use that, utilize that driveway. We've just done a bunch of work in that area to improve the storm sewer and the drainage. Um, the size of these garbage trucks, of course, turning around makes it really unsafe for them to have to back down there. Uh, our alternative would be to require customers at the end of the lane to bring it all the way down to the very other end of DuPont Lane. So this has kind of been the happy medium, um, you know, to, to try to solve everybody's problem at one time, to allow us the option of being able to turn around, not damage the property. We did have three bidders. They were, this was a considerable, uh, low bid of that process.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Next, Mayor, resolution number 1819-042. Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 1819-042 hereto attached, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement between the city of East Peoria and the Peoria Pecan Urbanized Area Transportation Study, PUET, for the fiscal year 2019 be approved, and that this resolution number 1819-042 be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please. Second, Mr. Call.
Thank you, Commissioner Call. Each year, we, we do this. We are a member of the PUETs group, I guess. And this year, this resolution is to approve $8,831, which is our annual membership fee. And the, the benefit that we have received via PUETs over the years is tremendous. If you look at Summit Drive, Summit is on the, the far end of the community, right next to Washington. It's a, a cut-through road that, nothing else, Illinois Central College loves it. It is, it is great access to the people of that area to, I guess, a quick access to 116. Centennial Drive, for example, that's been a big PUETs project. I think we have a PUETs project that's going to be down by Bob Michael, if I'm not mistaken. But we've had multiple large PUETs projects in the city of East Peoria. These projects are, any, anything that we submit has to have, I guess, benefit to the entire area, not just to the city of East Peoria. We far, our, our benefits have far out, have been much better than the 8,000 and some dollars it's cost us each year. So whenever this comes up, I'm eager to do it. So it's something that I'm happy that we're a part of.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Real quick, Mayor, I didn't write it down immediately. Was that Commissioner Call that seconded the PUETs?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
And my final item, it was resolution number 1819-051. It was resolution requesting permission for temporary closure of state mandated roadways for a public event for a bridge-to-bridge run. That's been pulled because it was found that we do not need a permit for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jeffers?
I have two items, Mr. Mayor. First one, be resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 1819-041, hereto attached, resolution approving and authorizing the acceptance of the proposal for a purchase of a sewer maintenance camera from Co-Equipment, Inc., in the amount of $38,900 be approved, and that this resolution, resolution number 1819-041 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner Call.
Thank you, Commissioner Call. Our current camera is almost 15 years, well, 15 years old. And, and the life of that kind of thing is, it's, it's at the end of its life. It needs to be replaced. This is an item we use a lot, and it's a very, a good camera, can save a lot of time, and we just need it to diagnose our below-ground sewer lines. So we did get a good price on this, one that's more of a demo model, but it's, it's as new, has the same warranty as new, so it's in our budget and we're grateful to have a chance to get it.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, your honor.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is a housekeeping item that we had missed, and we're just catching up a little bit. This is a new area with the TC3. I'll read it, and when there may be some more comment yet. Be resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 1819-049 hereto attached, a resolution approving and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Tazewell County Consolidated Communications, TC3, regarding police and fire dispatch services be approved, and that this resolution number 1819-049 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Commissioner. We've been transitioning to TC3 for 911 services, et cetera. I'll defer here to Commissioner Call, just, we're just catching up with-
Simply a housekeeping thing. This is just a formal agreement that was kind of an oversight, if you will, that went out to all the agencies that are currently in agreement with dispatch services with TC3. It's just to formalize everything. So just a housekeeping measure. We've already passed the agreement. Nothing else has changed, other than getting the signature, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, your honor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Jeffers, Mr. Call.
Three items this evening, all exciting, if you ask me.
Yeah.
I'm a little biased. Resolution number 1819-048, whereas Fire Chief Alan Service has submitted his resignation for retirement purposes, and whereas Chief Service's last day of service to the fire department was May 15, 2018, and whereas John F. Knapp was appointed to interim fire chief of the East Peoria Fire Department following Chief Service's last day of service and has been acting in that role since that time, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city to appoint John F. Knapp to the office of fire chief of the East Peoria Fire Department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that John F. Knapp is hereby appointed to the office of fire chief of East Peoria Fire Department effective August 16, 2018, at a base salary of $120,675 per year and annual uniform allowance of $825. Mr. Mayor, I move you that resolution number 1819-048 be adopted as presented.
Second please.
Second.
Mr. Densberger?
Thank you, Commissioner Densberger. So I gave Chief Knapp an out. He had a prior family obligation. Told him I think I could handle this on my own accord this evening. He has done a tremendous job in that interim position. This is actually his second time around. So quite honestly, it comes down to the timing and the next two agenda items as well, as far as the vision for the fire department as it relates to the services we provide, not just the city of East Peoria, but just from a regional standpoint as well. I'm a little partial in my bias towards the services that we provide within our community. I think they're second to none. And quite honestly, I have full faith and confidence in Mr. Knapp. So in fairness to him, I'd like to read a little statement, if you guys don't mind, coming from Mr. Knapp.
A little bit shorter than what he was making.
Yes. I think, I think so. Who knows? I don't know. Depends on his public speaking skills. First, my sincere thanks to our mayor, city council, and city staff for having the faith and trust in, in myself and the members of the East Peoria Fire Department. Together, we will move forward improving a departmental structure that has been in place since 1979. We will improve our second-to-none delivery of service to our citizens by developing our leadership from within. We will do this with expanded training, further education, and by building relationships both internally and externally throughout the region. Over the next several years, you can expect to see a group of young firefighter paramedics performing one of the world's most challenging and stressful jobs, safer and more efficient than ever before. It's been an incredible, incredible privilege for me personally since 1990 to have had the opportunity to work with such diverse, intelligent, caring, and compassionate group of professionals. My hope for my partners at the East Peoria Fire Department is that we will never settle for anything other than being the best in the business. Thank you, John Knapp, Deputy Chief, East Peoria Fire Department.
Other discussion?
Mayor, I, everybody knows I'm on the fire department, and this is one of those that's not even a question. It's absolutely something I should not vote on, this and the next two items. My personal thing with John, though, I've known John for a long time. I am proud of him. He's, he was actually in my wedding. We've been friends for a long, long time. I think he'll do a great job. I, but I'm going to have to abstain on all three items.
So noted. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Abstain.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
We have four ayes and one abstention, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, your honor, I have resolution number 1819-044. Have to read this one at length, so bear with me on the next two. It's a resolution authorizing the increase of one deputy fire chief on the East Peoria Fire Department. Whereas Title I, Chapter 5, Section 2.1 of the East Peoria City Code, authorizes the city council to determine from time to time by resolution, the number of individuals to hold each rank on the fire department. And whereas Section 1-5-2 of the city code created a rank of deputy fire chief to be held by not more than two firefighters, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city of East Peoria to increase the total number of individuals holding the rank of deputy fire chief on the East Peoria Fire Department from one to two. And whereas the number of individuals holding ranks in the fire department, other than the deputy fire chief and firefighter, shall remain unchanged. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that Section 1, effective on August 16, 2018, the fire department of the city of East Peoria shall consist of the following personnel. A, one fire chief. B, two deputy fire chiefs. C, three assistant fire chiefs. D, nine lieutenants. E, 30 firefighters. F, one paid-on-call firefighter. Section 2, the deputy fire chief shall be appointed in the manner provided by the city code. Mr. Mayor, I move you that resolution number 1819-044 be adopted as presented.
Second please.
Second.
Mr. Densberger?
Thank you, Commissioner Densberger. Nearly two years ago, we passed an ordinance revising, went through kind of a similar measure where we, we set up a structure of the fire department a little bit differently, where we were not to appoint no more than two deputy fire chiefs. Nearly two years ago, we filled one of those with Mr. Knapp as the deputy chief of fire. So the goal here this evening is to create the second, second deputy chief position. We'll have a deputy chief of fire operations and training and deputy chief of EMS operations and training. And that will follow in the subsequent resolution as well. So with that being said, and I'll, I'll cover it a little more in depth in the next resolution, Chief Beck would be the deputy chief of VMS operations and training, and soon to be Chief Brown will be the deputy chief of fire operations and training. And you know, as things evolve, this world's ever-evolving, and it's no different in the fire service and EMS. You know, Chief Brewer made an unpopular decision 35 years ago, and that was to create an ambulance service using our fire department. It was not popular at the time, but clearly the man had a vision, and I can't imagine where this city would be without that service that we provide today. No different than moving forward administratively, with the amount of training and effectiveness of the command structure we currently have, it's virtually impossible to have that continuity and stay ahead of the times. There are certain training requirements that we must meet, as well as those that are recommended, certain state laws that we have to abide by. The right thing to do two years ago was to place the one. The right thing to do this evening is to place both. That way, it becomes a more effective way of operating. So I obviously am supporting both of these this evening.
Other discussion?
Your honor, I have discussed this at length multiple times with Commissioner Call and with Chief Knapp. I can't say that the increased expense is not a concern to me, because it is. However, current revenues support implementing this. It's going to be tight, but we can support it. But what has convinced me is, in, in speaking with Chief Knapp, the man has a vision. He has a clear vision, he's clear of direction, all of which is, I believe, extremely positive for the city, for our fire department, the city as a whole, and actually for a good portion of Tazewell County. At some point, you have to be willing to give someone the opportunity to improve, and I think this is a opportune time to do that.
Very good. Go ahead, Ken.
I think what Commissioner Densberger said about cost is a concern, has been for these last several years for us, and it always has been, always. The cost of going to a full ambulance service was a hefty increase in the city budget back, how many years ago, 35?
35.
And the additional manpower, and yet it's one that's, we can, probably can't imagine not having it today. There are ways, and as a good manager, I believe, yes, in, in giving the tools to management and our city staff to get their job done. And the command structure of both, I don't want to leave police out, police and fire lends itself to being organized well. And I think there's some potential cost savings here, arranging the times and so forth. It's, it's a challenge, and I've spoken to Chief Knapp. And there's ways to, you know, he's responsible for his budget as a whole, not just personnel, but it's also equipment, capital. I know he's got a vision for perhaps regional cooperation and so forth, and things that may make up that dollar amount pretty easily if we work to, work smart and out of the box. I think he's, he's the kind of man that has that background and the, the staff that can work together to make those things happen. So I will support this. I think a way to, just, I know we have one on-call person that's auxiliary, I think is the title of that person. I mean, I, I think we could perhaps, it depends, and the problem we have is that we have injuries at com, workman's comp, and we, and we were short people, and everyone's on staff, everything's working good, we're good. But this is, this is training for both the fire side of the house and the, and the medical side of the house, and it really lends itself to this kind of structure. And I think we can make it work, and I'm willing to support it, and willing also to work with whoever's on this council. The next few months, for sure, we're together here to make it work as best as possible. I will support it. Very good.
I just thought it was important to note, one thing I missed, these, both these positions will be 40-hour positions. That's one of the challenges we've had. Chief Beck knows this better than anyone else with the amount of time invested. Not fair to him and his family, quite honestly, on a 24, 48-hour schedule, with the amount of responsibility that it takes. So I thought that was important.
I think it's important to note that, that Chief and Deputy Chief here, you really stood back, and council stood back, and let them convince, and the passion that they have certainly was overwhelming.
Absolutely. Had to come from them.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Abstain.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
We have four ayes and one abstention, your honor.
Thank you very much.
With that, resolution number 1819-045, resolution appointing various positions in the East Peoria Fire Department. Whereas the city of East Peoria, the city has appointed John F. Knapp as the fire chief effective August 16, 2018, and whereas the city has heretofore authorized the appointment of an additional deputy fire chief of the East Peoria Fire Department, and whereas, as a result, there are two vacant positions of deputy fire chief, and whereas future fire chief, John F. Knapp seeks to appoint Assistant Fire Chief Ryan W. Beck as deputy fire chief of the East Peoria Fire Department, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city to appoint Ryan W. Beck as deputy fire chief effective August 15, 2018, whereas as a result of the appointment of Ryan W. Beck as deputy fire chief, there is a vacancy in the position of assistant fire chief, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city to appoint Lieutenant Brett J. Brown as assistant fire chief of the East Peoria Fire Department effective August 15, 2018, and whereas as a result of the additional deputy chief position of the city, of the East Peoria Fire Department created heretofore, there is a vacancy in the deputy chief position, and whereas fire chief John F. Knapp seeks to appoint Assistant Fire Chief Brett J. Brown as deputy fire chief effective August 16, 2018, and whereas as a result of these appointments, there is an opening in the position of lieutenant, and whereas it is in the best interest to appoint the next person on the eligibility list, which is Charles E. Melton II as lieutenant in the East Peoria Fire Department effective August 16, 2018. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that Section 1, Ryan W. Beck is hereby, hereby appointed as deputy fire chief effective August 15, 2018. 2018. Section 2, the East Peoria Board of Fire and Police Commissioners is hereby authorized and directed to appoint Brett J. Brown as assistant fire chief on the fire department effective August 15th, 2018. Section 3, Brett J. Brown is hereby appointed as deputy fire chief effective August 16th, 2018. Section 4, the East Peoria of Fire and Police Commissioners is hereby authorized and directed to appoint Charles E. Melton II as lieutenant on the fire department effective August 16th, 2018. Mr. Mayor, I move you that Resolution Number 1819-045 be presented as adopted.
Second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Densberger, thank you.
So that was a lot, and if you followed it, you get an A. Basically, we have to follow protocol. So we've created the two deputy chief positions, which will be, soon to be Chief Beck and Chief Brown. In order to do that, we have to promote Chief Beck first, because he's currently an assistant fire chief. We promote him to deputy fire chief on the fifteenth. We subsequently, Lieutenant Brown, as he is now, will be promoted to assistant chief effective August 15th. Subsequently, August 16th, we'll promote then assistant chief Brown to deputy chief Brown. And then we'll be promoting Lieutenant Melton to, or, yeah, no, firefighter Melton to Lieutenant Melton. So, long story short, it's part of the protocol to make this happen.
Thank you. Comments, please.
Your Honor, about eleven years ago, when I was first elected, I was the Commissioner of Public Safety at, at about three years at that time, I, I got to know the two gentlemen that will be serving this evening. Both are fine people that are dedicated to their task, to the department, and I'm sure will do excellent work for the city. Congratulations to both of you.
I'll just make a comment. Brett, you've come a long way. Very proud of you, very happy you took this role. I know at one time, it was like pulling teeth to get you to go in command, and one of the most talented men I've ever met, a nurse. Glad you're taking that role. Congratulations. Roll call, please.
Abstain.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mingus.
Aye.
Four ayes and one abstention, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Public comment from the audience on a non-agend item. Please come forward. Please, sir, welcome. We'll, we'll get time for both of you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is John Christopher. I live up on, off of Pekin Avenue. There's people here with me tonight, these three other people. We all live on either Crescent Street or Roundoff Street. What we have in common is, there's an alley behind us. All of our garages and our driveways go up the alley. In other words, I can't get home without going up the alley. It's just the way these houses were built. They've been like that forever. We've had a problem up there for approximately seven years now. And what it is, is a simple problem, and it could be solved real simply, but we haven't had much luck getting it solved. People block this alley. For whatever reason, they block it. There's one house, 314 Doering, who is the major cause of everything that goes on up there. And I'm sure the police department and everybody else knows where that address is at. There's been several drug busts there. There's been a drug conviction. And I'm not getting this out of the top of my head. This has been in the newspapers. It's been in the East Peoria Courier. I'm not just making these things up. They were in the newspapers. These people that live here continually block that alley, and we can't get it stopped. What's happened just recently, besides all the drug arrests and everything else, are now there's taxi cabs showing up there. Taxi cab will pull up in the alley, shut their motor off, person goes inside the house and comes back out. One day, I counted fifteen taxi cabs. We, we informed the police to know about this. We've called the police so many times. I know the number by heart. And they're probably sick of hearing my name, and sick of hearing from me, but, but we've got a problem. It's a problem. I can't go to work in the morning. These two ladies here with me, they both work full-time. They can't get out of there in the mornings. It, it's a real serious problem. Gary, Gary Densberger knows about it. He's, he's heard from me before on this issue. There's code violations there, which, like I said, that's really none of my business, but I cannot believe the stuff that goes on in that house down there, and the city's sitting there letting it happen. Just lately, this woman that lives in this house decided she needed a wheelchair lift. This is a, not a ramp, not a wheelchair ramp. It's a piece of equipment that probably costs twenty thousand dollars. She had it installed, and it's sticking out in the alley, six and a half feet. I'd say two feet over city property. I've got an overhead here, if anybody wants to look at it, shows you where the, there's a fifteen-foot clearance of the alley. She's over that clearance by two foot with that wheelchair ramp. I'd like to know personally, just how she got a permit to put that in.
Mr. Christopher reached out to me ten days, two weeks ago, and at this time, the lift was not in, and I don't tie, no permit has been issued for that. So I assume we will have people up there checking it out tomorrow?
I know our inspector was aware of it.
Okay.
So, we can, we can take a look at it more closely, but I know he was aware of its installation.
Yeah. If it is over city property, then we need to take appropriate action.
Cannot be in the right of way.
Is the alley city property?
Uh, if it sticks out into the alley, it is.
The alley has a fifteen-foot, well, actually a fourteen-point-seventy-five-hundred clearance. That's just a little less than fifteen foot. This overhead here came from Tazewell County. You can see the lines on it. It's not real accurate, because it was taken by an airplane, and it's kind of overlapped.
When Mr. Christopher reached out to me, I promised him I would look into this. I did reach out to code enforcement. I know they have checked into things a couple of times. I would appreciate if we did look into the lift. I reached out to Chief Ganshaw, and as he and I were discussing it, he commented to me that he had a squad on the way up there at that very moment, because someone was blocking the alley, and he assured-
Joe Boyer knows about it.
And, yes. And Chief Ganshaw assured me that he would have the officers keep an eye on the property, including the parking issue. I also reached out to Rick Samonski that same day, and asked him to go up and take a look at parking on the street and in the alley, and evaluate for-
It all, it all aggravates that problem that we have. Every bit of that that's going on up there, it all aggravates. It just makes it worse and worse and worse.
Yeah. Mr. Samonski assured me that he would look into it. I called Mr. Christopher this morning to see what progress, and he, as you can hear, it's virtually none. So I reached back out to Mr. Samonski. He had issued a work order to have some signage put up. He was going to go back up and recheck it. He told me today that the snowplows every winter have problems, because there's parking on both sides of the street.
Anything, anything would help, and I thank you for that, because the sign might help us a lot. I don't know.
You've been heard, sir.
And, and he, so they're going to evaluate on-street parking and decide what may or may not be appropriate up there. So, there is some attention being paid to it. I understand your frustration, and some of these gentlemen, now that they are aware of it, perhaps we can help get something done. But I appreciate you coming here.
I thank you for whatever help you can give us. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience, sir. You've been heard.
It's, it is, I mean, you had, just have no idea what it's like to leave for work every morning and have to wait for someone to move a vehicle.
You shouldn't have to do that.
It happens all the time, every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Comments from the council. Commissioner Decker.
A few things, Mayor. Oh, positive notes. I, first of all, I have four things. First of all, I want to thank Doug and his crew at Eastside. Some of you know, I help out with the East Peoria High School band program. The kids are in it. But this weekend, the East Peoria High School, in conjunction with Metamora High School, utilized the facilities at, at Eastside for a very large event, a DCI event, Drum Corps International. It brings a lot of people to the city, at least for the evening. The, the soccer field lot was full of, of buses and equipment-carrying trucks. A great event. Hopefully in the future, we can continue to do more things. I'm never, I never cease to be amazed at, at all the, the events that Doug is bringing into Eastside. And I, I really, that's, obviously, we always have softball and soccer and, and baseball, but it's great when we can expand and go into other resourceful events as well. The next thing, recycling bins. Make this plea to the public. If anybody has the red recycling bins, and because of the recycling program changing, you no longer wish to have your bins, we can use them. Not the city necessarily, but if, if you can bring them to Public Works, there are a couple different groups who would like to use them. Illinois Central College, as well as our, our school districts, would like to use them for, for different means of gathering recyclables in their schools. So, please don't throw them away. If they're not broken, we, we would like to put them to use in other areas. The next is junk or bulk cleanup. If you remember at budget time, the decision was made to only have one this year. So I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that it is upcoming. It is the week of September 10th, September 10th through the 14th. So, just want to make sure the public knows that there will only be one this year, and it will be during that week. Hopefully, it's a, a nice sunny week and, we can get a lot done. And finally, St. Jude was this weekend. I always have a part in that with the, I usually do with the City of East Peoria's, East Peoria, Peoria Run. Such a great event. Again, we, Oak Grove Bible Church, which we started, Tim Jeffers attends that church, and they appreciated the support that the church gives to allow us to, to start in that parking lot. We wound through town, went down Springfield Road, probably disrupted traffic quite a bit in some areas, but we collected a lot of money. The East Peoria Run collected ninety-five thousand dollars for St. Jude. Such a great event, and it is great to see the public, the community of East Peoria come out and support. We had people coming out on the road.
On ways to, well, help St. Jude. And I, I know one of the boys who's somewhat, well, he's Jackson, who's currently facing treatment. I, I worked with his mother in my previous job at Caterpillar, and I actually went to school with Jackson's grandmother. Gary does, I know her too, Chris McGlaughlin. Gafford is her grandson, is Jackson. And so there's always that personal touch that you, sometimes you get, and unfortunate in this case, he's suffering like this, has this treatment he needs, but, you know, we give back. And it really, to see a face or a child in person, it really makes it real. I know there are a lot of needs in the community, but that's one that is, is a big one, and we can be proud of that as a community. They, they've done it. And so, that's all.
Great to see. America is unique in that we're giving society, and to see all the people band together, it's really, it's encouraging that there's hope. Commissioner Call.
Yeah, just a few things. Give a quick shout-out to all those that participated in the St. Jude. What an incredible success story, and what the mayor said about giving this area is just absolutely unbelievable, how they pulled together for such an amazing cause, if you will. Team Jackson, my kids, had her, had his grandmother for a teacher, and it was really awesome when he was first diagnosed, how that clad. But you can register by going to their site, epcc.org, and that's still open. And last but not least, I want to pay a little respect to a local hero that passed away last Friday, Sergeant Harold Berg. He was of the First Marine Raider Battalion in World War II. Guy was ninety-two years old, and I had the honor of meeting him, just by luck, quite honestly, last fall. Chief Knapp's sons put on a, an event to raise funds for the Honor Flight, and there were a group of veterans sitting at a table, some older veterans from Vietnam, Korea, World War II. Went over and thanked them for their service without giving it much thought, but I had my Marine t-shirt on, and a gentleman approached me and said, there's a guy that would like to meet with you. So I went back there, and here's this old crusty Marine, Harold Berg, and the Journal Star should know him well. They did an article on this gentleman, because he actually represented the Raiders. Sadly enough, most have already passed prior to his passing. So he represented them on a trip. I don't know how many years back this has been, within a couple of years ago, but I truly enjoyed meeting this guy. He's a two-time Purple Heart recipient, and, and I'll say, that generation to me is the greatest generation of our lifetime. I, I truly believe that. The guy was absolutely incredible, selfless, just a real treat to meet. And as I'm walking away, he slipped something in my pocket. And I get out to my car, and I looked, and it was a challenge coin, a Marine Corps challenge coin, and on the back it says, "World War II, First Raider Battalion Sergeant Harold Berg." So, a shout-out to you, sir, Semple Frye, from one Marine to another. Godspeed, and we'll take it from here. So.
Rest in peace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Couple of thanks. First of all, to echo Commissioner Call's comments on the Chamber of Leadership School. My employer, SEVQ, has registered someone each year, and it's a good, great development tool for someone that aspires to a leadership or management role. They get some real hands-on experience, and makes some contacts and develops some relationships that serve them well. So, if you're out there and you have a, a business or would simply like to register yourself for it, it's, it's far less expensive than the same version on the other side of the river, and it's a good experience. Secondly, Your Honor, this evening, this, this council placed a referendum question on the November ballot. I hope the people educate themselves.
Absolutely.
Make a good choice, and I believe it is incumbent on those that have supported the question to ensure that people are properly educated as to what the ramifications of their vote may be, because it certainly will impact the future of this city for decades.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn until Tuesday evening, August 21st, 2018, at 6:00 PM.
Second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Call. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mingus.
Aye.
Four ayes and one abstention, Your Honor.
We are adjourned. You know, John, I spoke to a group-